Good afternoon, I'd like to call the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees, June 18th, 215 meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call and recognition of visitors.
This evening's visitors include Nancy Ingram.
Trustee-elect Nancy Ingram joined us at KACC T last week, and so I'm glad that you survived and appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the open forum. It's a section of the board agenda that's a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful and civil and should not address matters related to individual personnel matters with the college. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or are otherwise the subject of review by the college or board. There are no registered speakers for tonight's forum, and so the open session is closed. Awards and recognition.
Dr. Cook, we have no awards or recognitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. College lobbyist report.
In Dick's absence, I will kind of provide a brief summary of the report that he submitted that's before you. A couple points. There were a few things happening in Topeka over the past several weeks, and some of those directly affect us in certain ways. And I will talk about primarily the property tax elections, the local elections, and also the sales tax issue. If anyone has input on those, feel free to offer up or ask questions. First of all, the property tax elections. As we all know, for those of us who follow this, cities and counties are not allowed to increase budgets from property taxes that exceed the rate of inflation unless approved by voters at a regularly scheduled election. This will become effective on January 1st, 2018. It's our understanding that it does not apply to community colleges, so we will not fall in that category of having to adhere to this legislation. Local elections. The conference committee report on HB 2104 was adopted and signed by the governor. This report moves municipal and school elections from the spring to the fall of odd years. Once the governor signs this, it will become law. This keeps elections nonpartisan, but with cities retaining the option to make them partisan, and it moves elections to the fall of odd years. Odd years, not even years, and this keeps them separate from state and national elections. This is something that does affect us, so now our trustee elections will fall in the odd years and fall.
And maybe, in awards and recognition, we probably should have recognized our senator. But my question is, what does that do to the terms of everybody? Is it in the legislation that you now serve? Normally you'd be out June 30th, and now you have to serve until when, January?
You serve until the second Monday in January.
So it extends terms of sitting elected officials.
Nice, huh?
That means your compensation will add on to your compensation for this position.
I'd never heard how that had been resolved.
Lastly, sales tax. There's an issue about the college having to pay sales tax on purchases. We believe that we are also exempt from having to do that. That's a significant one for us when you consider the amount of money that we spend on an annual basis. So, at the end of the day, all of these issues, while we are impacted by the local elections, we seem to have been spared the effects of the property tax elections as well as the sales tax.
And I believe on your calculation of the sales tax, that potentially could have meant a $1.4 million increase to our budget on the purchases we make, I think, as you note I saw. So, that is a big item.
Right.
Senator Baumgartner, do you concur?
Actually, there will be hearings over the next four years on taxation for those groups that are currently exempt. In fact, there are 99 different categories, and so we'll be having hearings on those groups that we're going to continue to be exempt from.
The last component is the governor's role in identifying $50 million that needs to be cut from the budget. I believe he got a start. The first thing that he, I think he cut was a very small item. It was our GED accelerator program, one that we were not included in the first year, which we would have been included in had it gone along. I think the region's are working on some way that they can still manage to execute that program, but that did fall by the wayside. I believe the amount was under $2 million, maybe 1.9.
1.9.
Yeah.
So, do you believe that that $50 million line item cut will come from higher ed?
There's a lot of speculation out there. It very well could, and if that happens, we'll deal with it the best that we can. We budgeted for a 5% cut already, so if it should happen, we think we'll be prepared to deal with it.
Any questions or comments on the legislative report? Trustee Sharp, do you have any additional insights?
It was a long, long session, and we kind of lucked out. I don't know that we'll be so lucky in the future, but I'm glad they're gone and back.
Okay. Anything else?
Sure.
Next item is the audit committee. The item in your packet are the minutes from the audit committee. We didn't have those, we did not have those completed for the May board meeting, but trustee Musel gave a report on our audit, last audit committee, but the minutes are there. Unless you have questions, we will move on. Collegial steering did not meet in June, so we have no report for collegial steering. Human resources, trustee Sharp.
We had no meeting, and there was no report.
Okay. Learning quality, trustee Cross.
Sorry, I'm having technical difficulties. Please bear with me. All right, the learning quality committee met June 1st, 2015, in this room. Trustee David Lindstrom and I were here, along with a host of others, Andy Anderson and Dr. Salcheck. There were a few issues discussed regarding curriculum and curriculum review. Clarissa Craig, the Associate Vice President of Instruction, introduced Dennis Arjo. Am I saying that correctly?
That's correct.
Thank you. Professor and Chair of Philosophy and Religion, who will be the Chair of the Ed Affairs Committee for the next academic year. Clarissa presented for review a course modification for Introduction to Business effective academic year 2016-17, and it was requested that the curriculum changes approved by the Educational Affairs Committee be sent forward for full board review. Clarissa also provided a summary of the work done this past year by the Ed Affairs Division Curriculum Committees and others that are involved in the curriculum process. More than 100 new courses and 74 course modifications were approved, 129 courses were deactivated. There were affiliation, cooperation, articulation, and reverse transfer agreements also presented for discussion by Clarissa Craig. And on behalf of continuing education, Clarissa presented two cooperative agreements for approval. One is an agreement with the Global Corporate College, together with its partner, Anne Arundel Community College, which provides enrollment and hosting for Siena. Keith Krueger explained that this renewal and updated contract language better protects JCC's interests. Also presented on behalf of continuing education was a renewal agreement with the Metropolitan Community College for the JCCC Commercial Driver's License Program. The Instructure MOOC cooperative agreement discussed at last month's meeting was presented to move forward to full board. It will enable us to experiment and determine how MOOCs could benefit JCCC, which apparently it's necessary that we keep a presence in the MOOC community, although there is some discussion as to what benefits there really are doing that. Number three, articulation and reverse transfer agreements. There was a presentation by J.D. Scragg about two articulation and reverse transfer agreements to the committee. The agreement with Baker University, which is effective this fall of 2015, guarantees the college JCCC students who graduate with, one, a minimum 2.6 grade point average, and, two, an associate's degree or a double AS degree admission to Baker and a guaranteed scholarship based on their GPA. The renewal agreement with DeVry University is an update from a 2009 agreement and guarantees that the college credits will go toward a degree. J.D. also shared that DeVry is a for-profit school that is HLC accredited. All agreements presented today have been approved by the legal department, and it was requested that all agreements presented today be moved forward for full board approval. Shannon Ford also presented highlight technical support for learning activities. Shannon is the Director of Academic Technology Services and gave an overview of the evolution of the computer labs. He also gave a brief demonstration of the virtual desktop from a mobile device that would allow students in the future to access software that would usually only be available in the classroom. MCC and Emporia State are currently using this technology. Shannon will do further research on this technology and prepare projections reporting the cost. He'll report back to the committee at a later date. Mr. Anderson announced that two professors were granted professor emeritus status this semester. Mr. Robert Pinker of the Science and Chair Sawyer in the Reading Department have been approved by the emeritus committee, and the announcement will be in the June 18th board packet. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions or comments of trustee Cross? Okay, thank you very much. Management committee, trustee Musel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a number of items that require action this month that are all pretty routine. The first one is a refinancing opportunity on the Series 2006 bonds with the help of our financial consultant, Bill Henderson of Piper Jaffray, who provided information on what the college can save if we refinance these bonds that have an outstanding amount of $4,925,000. Because of the low interest rate environment, if we refinance quickly, we can probably save a total of $225,000 or about $38,000 annually over the life of the bonds. And so, we reviewed that and approved it, and it's the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to adopt a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of the student commons and parking system refunding revenue bonds in the approximate principal amount of $4,295,000. And the data can be found subsequently in the board packet. I would make that motion to refinance those bonds as presented and save that money.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Any questions? This is a significant step. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Our monthly kind of dig deeper into the college this time was by Lenora Cook, the Dean of the Healthcare Professions and Wellness Division. She presented an overview of programs the college offers. Registered nursing, emergency medical science, dental hygiene, health, physical education, and recreation, practical nursing, respiratory care, and neurodiagnostic technology. She provided information about the utilization of the Olathe Health Education Center, its traffic patterns, class times, and how we can improve the utilization of that new building out in Olathe. We also need to take action on the official Johnson County Community College newspapers, where we are required by state law to publish certain notifications. Kristy McWard reviewed the statute and reviewed the papers that we have done, used in the past, and recommended that we designate the Legal Record, the Shawnee Dispatch, and the Gardner News, formerly known as the Tri-County News, as the official newspapers of the college and the Board of Trustees. And based on her recommendation, it's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to designate the Legal Record, the Shawnee Dispatch, and the Gardner News as official newspapers of the college, and that publication constitutes legal notice on behalf of the Board of Trustees, and I would so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next two items are renewals of agreements with our professional consultants for bond counsel and financial advisor. The first one is the recommendation that we accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the retention of Gilmore &amp; Bell as bond counsel for fiscal year 2015 and 2016. They have been our bond counsel for some time. They do all the work for issuance of bonds, and they get paid only upon the closing of the bond issuance, and I would move that we accept the recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The other recommendation is that we continue the relationship with Piper Jaffray as the college's financial advisor. As I mentioned earlier, it was Bill Henderson that monitors our bond issues and our interest rates to see if we can refinance and save money. We've done several of those since I've been on the college Board of Trustees. They help us in preparing the bond issuance and the documents, help us retain our AAA bond rating. And so, based on that, it's my recommendation, or the recommendation of the management committee, that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the retention of Piper Jaffray as financial advisor for fiscal year 2015 and 2016. I'd so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I should go back. The bond counsel recommendation was also limited to the fiscal year 2015 and 2016. And I think it's anticipated that we may do an RFP on those sometime in the future to ensure we're getting as good a service and as good a rate as we think we are.
Yes.
Mitch Borgers reviewed the two sole source requisitions. He also reviewed the bid summaries between $25,000 and $100,000 and the recommendations following those bids. Remember, do we act on those?
No.
We don't act on those unless somebody has questions. Now, we get to renewals of existing contractual relationships. There are four renewals. I'll take those first, and if it's okay with council, general council, we'll vote on those together if we identify them separately. The first renewal, all of these are renewals of contracts that are somewhere in the process of a five-year contract. All of them were initially sent out for bid or RFP. There were a number of responses in each of them. There were firms responding, and there was a recommendation accepted in the past, and what we're doing now is continuing a subsequent year of their four or five-year contracts. The first one is a renewal for annual contract for beverages. It has been issued to the Pepsi Beverage Company, and even though we'd like to honor Mr. Stewart, as he leaves the board with his Coke, we're still going to stick with Pepsi. The second renewal is for housekeeping services for the following buildings and areas ATB, the Comm Building, Galileo's Pavilion, Hersteiner Child Development Center, Horticulture Science Center, Hospitality and Culinary Academy, Nerman Museum of Contemporary Art, the OHAC Building at the Olathe Campus, Police Academy Warehouse, West Park, and the WLB. This would be to ABM Janitorial Services. That's the second renewal. The third renewal is for the annual contracts for furniture. Again, this is an ongoing contract, and this renewal is just for one year, with Scott Rice, the John A. Marshall Company, Scott Rice Office Works and Spaces, Inc., for a total amount not to exceed $700,000. And the final renewal is our contracts for fine paper, and that contract is recommended to be renewed with Shaughnessy for not to exceed $125,000 and $25,000 from Unisource, total expenditures not to exceed $150,000. I would make a motion to renew all four of those contracts consistent with their service and the recommendation of the college administration.
Second. Does any trustee wish to pull any one of those out of that group?
If I may, just briefly, the $220,000, nearly a quarter of a million, we spend on beverages. Why do we spend so much money on beverages?
I think from our audit that we saw at the audit committee, that is the purchase of the product.
Purchase of the product for sale at our various dining establishments and in our vending.
And our vending machines.
We make money off.
Yes, yes.
We receive money. We actually received money back from the Pepsi contract, I think of $68,000, which was one of the reasons Pepsi was selected for that contract.
I thank you all. I was assuming. I just thank you.
We'll then take them as a group vote. Is there any, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on any of the items in addition to trustee Cross's concern? I guess I would just ask a question on the housekeeping. You know, we went through quite a discussion a couple of years ago. That seems to be working well. Not heard any comment about that. And so, the management committee must feel good about that, so I appreciate that coming forward again.
Any other points of question or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next couple items are new contracts. The first one is Information Technology Service Management System. It was a request for proposal. Twenty-three firms were notified. Eight firms responded, and the recommended responder was Team Dynamics. This is for a, to help us track in our IT system service requests, problems, projects, and the fixing of those projects. And is recommended by the college administration that we accept the recommendation to approve the lowest proposal of $102,306 from Team Dynamics for the purpose of an information technology service management system, and I would so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is an RFP that went out for roofing replacement projects for the gym, the CLB Building, the Science Building, and the Carlson Center roof replacements. Some will be funded with 2014-15 funds, and the library and WLB roof replacements will be funded with 2015 and 2016 funds. Forty-six firms were notified, six firms responded, and the low bid for each line item was accepted with the exception of the library building, where the cost savings in doing a separate bidding would not justify the issuance of a separate award. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the board accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the lowest acceptable bids of $833,990.90 from Delta Innovative Services, Inc., and $257,710 from Cov Roofing and Sheet Metal, Inc., plus an additional $109,170 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs. This would result in a total expenditure for these multiple roofs not to exceed $1,20879.90 for roof replacements, and I would so move.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I am impressed that we can get roof bids down to the 90 cent specificity. That's pretty impressive, Rex. Good job. The next item is for pavement maintenance and concrete restoration throughout the campus. It was a bid package, a new bid package. Sixteen firms were notified, five firms responded, and the low bid was offered by McConnell &amp; Associates, and so it's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the acceptable low bid of $327,289 from McConnell &amp; Associates Corp., Inc., plus an additional $32,729 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, an amount equal to 10% of the total bid, for a total expenditure not to exceed $360,018 for pavement maintenance and concrete restoration, and I would so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. The next one is a new bid, an RFP package for the remodeling of the Nerman Museum of Contemporary Art Gallery. Fifty-four firms were notified, three firms responded. The recommended bid is the low bidder of Lloyd Builders, Inc. And so, it's a recommendation of management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the administration to approve the lowest proposal from Lloyd Builders, Inc. in the amount of $172,750 plus an additional contingency of $17,275 for possible unforeseen costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $190,025 to remodel the Nerman Museum of Contemporary Art Gallery, and I would so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The last action item is an extension of the lease on the West Park Facility at 9780 West 87th Street. We executed an extension last year that goes through July 31st of this year. The proposed lease amendment will renew the existing four lease agreements for a five-year term, August 1, 2015 through July 31, 2020, with no increase in rent. The annual rent is $238,642.20, and it's a recommendation of the management committee that the administration, to accept the administration's recommendation, to exercise a five-year lease extension for West Park lease, per the agreement, subject to review by college counsel, and I would so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The thing I left for last is the annual report that Rex Hayes does on our capital infrastructure inventory and our one, five, and 10-year replacement plan. And I just think it's important for everybody to realize how thorough a job Rex and his team does in looking at every building on campus, every aspect of that building, whether it's HVAC or plumbing or windows or roof or masonry. And I think it's a credit to this college that we've taken such an effort, and we kind of know and we can plan what things are critical, what things we can live without, so we spend money we need to spend. It's also important to remember that we're putting more money into those capital items to make sure we don't fall behind and actually catch up a little bit. But we received that. You can get a book, too, or you can get it on disc if you want to have it. It will tell you about every building on campus, how old it is, when things were replaced, when things are scheduled to be replaced. And I think all of us appreciate the work. There's a lot of work that goes into that each year, Rex, so please thank your team. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Musel. Any questions? Any further comments? Thank you. Nominating committee, trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me get over to that page in my file here. Oh, thank you.
Old-fashioned way.
Yeah, the old school. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The nominating committee has put forward the following officers for the 2015-2016 board year. Chairman Greg Musel, Vice Chairman Stephanie Sharp, Treasurer David Lindstrom, Secretary Bob Drummond. And the following committees will be represented by the following trustee liaisons. Dr. Jerry Cook, David Lindstrom, and Lee Cross will be on management committee. HR will be represented by Bob Drummond as the chair, and Nancy Ingram. Learning quality, Lee Cross will be the chair, and Nancy Ingram. Audit committee, Stephanie Sharp will be the chair, and Greg Musel. Collegial steering, Stephanie Sharp and Greg Musel as chair. And the foundation liaisons will be Nancy Ingram and Dr. Jerry Cook. KACC liaison will be Dr. Jerry Cook, and the JCert liaison will be David Lindstrom. And it's a recommendation of the nominating committee that the Board of Trustees approve this slate of officers for the coming year, and I make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second. We have a motion and a second. I will say that this is an item that the board has spent some time discussing. We have one feeling on the board that these elections should take in place in July with new trustees. In this case, trustee-elect Nancy Ingram would have a chance to vote on them. Our July board meeting unfortunately comes after many of the committees began in the first week or two of July, and so I just wanted to say that there is that concern, and trustee-elect Ingram, there are people here that would like to wait so you come on board so you can vote on them. Nancy and I talked a little bit about that at KACC T, but with that, are there any questions or discussion to vote for this slate of officers? Trustee Stewart.
Can we add trustee-elect Ingram to several more committees?
Could.
Can we do that?
Any other questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we'll look forward to the new officers beginning July 1 and committee assignments. Thank you, trustee Sharp.
Thank you.
Next item is president's recommendations for action, and the next item is the treasurer's report. Trustee Musel has just worn himself out with the management committee, so I'm pleased to give the treasurer's report. The report is for the period ended April 30th. You'll note on page one of the treasurer's report, year-to-date revenues are ahead of prior year, and year-to-date expenditures are slightly below prior year, as they're recorded in the general PTE fund summary. As of April 30th, approximately 83% of the fiscal year has expired. Ad valorem property Ad valorem property taxes show that only 62% have been received, which is because the college receives this revenue in two large disbursements per year, in January and in June, so we'll see, hopefully, another, another major receipt in June. The June disbursement was, was received on June 5, and reflected in the June treasurer's report. The college's April 30 unencumbered cash balance was approximately $11.2 million higher than at the same period a year ago. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. It is the recommendation of the college administration that the board of trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month of April 30, 2015, subject to audit, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Counsel, can the chair make the motion? I guess he did, didn't he?
He did, yeah.
We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Advisory committees, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. You have in front of you Supplement B. It includes every single advisory committee that the college has, 51 in total. These advisory committees are essential to make sure that our curriculum that we offer to students is, is relevant and up to date. And it's very impressive, when you look through the rosters, you'll see members from the business community, from the academic communities, all a part of our college trying to make sure that we can do the very best we can. It's a feature that community colleges have, that kind of differentiates us from universities with respect to how we reach out in the community to get input on, for what we do into the classroom. So, I'd like to read the recommendation to you. It is the recommendation of the college administration that the board of trustees approve the advisory committees contained in Supplement B from July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016.
Do we have a motion?
I'd make that motion.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to, to reiterate the, the goal of, of these advisory committees, and it's, again, as Dr. Sobchak mentioned, it's a, it's something that's, I think, unique to, to community colleges, where it's our role to be responsive and flexible to the needs of the business community. We don't produce students who can get good jobs and keep good jobs and do good work if they aren't learning the tools that they need to be learning to serve the, in the business community. So, I, I would just encourage any of, any folks who are watching to, to participate, to contact us if you have a particular expertise that you'd like to, to share, or, or help to be advisors on our curriculum, on our, on our, the work that we do here. We, we can always use more input, and I just think it's a wonderful way for us to not only be, have, to prepare students for the next step, but to have that constant engagement with the community. That's the, the underpinnings of a community college. So, I just want to, to support the advisory committees and, and hope that we will continue to be effective in that way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Monthly report to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Cook, and I was remiss in, in thanking everybody who volunteers their time on these committees. They make a, a major contribution and do a fantastic job of it, and we're very fortunate to have them on board. Before you, you have the monthly report to the board. It's 26 pages, and, and these seem to be getting better every month as they identify or they highlight the accomplishments of our students, our faculty, and our staff. But what I found fascinating with this one is that it also, it features the aggressive outreach into the community that our, members of our faculty and staff are doing with regard to getting more, giving more students the opportunity to attend our college. It's really exciting to see so many different areas working so hard on our campus, as well as within the community. Also, when you look in here on page 23, you'll see a section devoted to our counseling center. I know over the past months, we've put a lot of focus on the counseling center, and we do that because they love all the special attention. But the, the real fact is, it is one of the most vital areas on our campus when it comes to the success of our college. On page 23, you'll see data for the month of April, a three-year trend, 2013, 2014, and 2015. These metrics reveal the impact that technology is having on our counseling efforts and how we're adapting to it. I have to say the transparency is absolutely terrific and very much appreciated. Kudos to the counseling area, and we're very, very excited about the future of our counseling. Now, a lot of questions, the primary question that I get asked a lot in the community is, during the summer, do you guys even come to work? Because there's a general perception that everything shuts down in the summertime, and, or are you playing golf every day? And clearly, if you're on our campus during the summer, you'll know that is not the, not the case. I'd like to kind of provide some, an overview here with regard to our enrollment this summer, and these numbers are as of June 12. You know, we had very good, a very good fall and spring semester as we, as we not only stopped the declines in enrollment, we also grew enrollment, and those are very positive. This summer, it's a little, head, head count's a little down by 2.5%, and that totals about 220 students. Credit hours are down about 3.7%. You know, as enrollment declines across the state and country are more the norm these days, we still feel that we're doing a pretty good job in managing our enrollment. We'll figure out what's going on here with these declines, and we'll take steps to try to turn that around. Overall this summer, we have 8,410 students here. 2,667 or 32% are full-time, while 68% are part-time. The demographics, they're very, they're interesting. 61% of these students are continuing, so this is not their first time, first time taking a class. Only 13% are first-time students, 25% are non-white. But here's something that's really fascinating, only 59% are using the main campus. Not even 60% are using our campus. 38% are online, and if you include hybrid, the number jumps to 45%. So, it's, another point, our, our campus has done a great job of acclimating to the market, the market demands, and providing more opportunities for online education here at the college. Our financial picture as of April 30 is very good. Our general fund revenues are up 2.3%, and that's driven primarily by the growth in the ad valorem tax revenues. Our expenses are flat versus a year ago. Our unencumbered balance is up 17%. That's up 17% versus one year ago. It's around $11 million. Now, that's a very good place to be when one considers that a week ago, a week ago, we were looking at the potential for some pretty significant cuts to higher ed in the state of Kansas. So, it's always good to have that reserve, that reserve that we could use if necessary. This past June, this, during this month, we celebrate our retirees with a luncheon on June 2. It's always a lot of fun to spend time with them on campus. We'll be unveiling the new additions to the Wall of Honor in August, and we'll look forward to welcoming them once again. We're always thankful to our retirees for leaving us an incredible legacy of excellence and innovation that we are always challenged to live up to. In their June newsletter, Tracy Osborne, Overland Park's Chamber of Commerce president, wrote a wonderful article that featured our college and all the great things we do in the community. The article was titled "A Good Time to Celebrate a Treasure." We're very thankful for the chamber's support. During the week of June 1, our hospitality and culinary program hosted an international culinary competition with schools from Hong Kong, Great Britain, Australia, and New Zealand. Kudos to Ona Ashley and Felix Stermer, who not just oversaw the week-long competition, but also conducted a menu of evening activities to entertain the students and advisors from all over the world. I can tell you that they got to go to a Royals game, and they still preferred soccer at the, at the end of the day. The week culminated with a dinner for members of our Friends with Taste, key program supporters, and the advisors from the programs. It was an amazing finale. We're so proud and thankful for the commitment of Ona and Felix and everyone involved to make this event happen. So, to wrap this up, we'd like to thank the trustees and all of our faculty and staff for an outstanding year. Any accomplishments that we have on our campus are the result of everyone working together. I'll read to you the top 10. Number one, we had positive movement in eight out of our nine key performance indicators. Our strategic plan continues. Number two, our strategic plan continues to move forward with 600,000 invested in strategic initiatives. Number three, we halted enrollment declines in the fall and spring semester. Number four, we implemented a new budgeting process. Five, our online and concurrent CollegeNow enrollment continues to demonstrate strong increases. Six, we had a campus lockdown. That seems like it was about five years ago, but the camp, campus handled it extremely well, and we learned a great deal that'll make us even more prepared for the future. We had a successful round of negotiations, they were completed on time. We have a toehold in Logistics Park in Edgerton. We harvested some significant private donations, which helped us upgrade our facilities and provide greater access for students to attend college here. And we launched a new advertising image that bright, with, with brightly colored images and a contemporary soundtrack, as well as a new website, which is outstanding. Most importantly, what I'm not, what I haven't mentioned here, is something that happens every day, is that every day in our classroom, learning is inspired, lives are transformed, and our community is stronger because of it. I'd like to recognize trustee-chair Jerry Cook. Dr. Cook's leadership over the past two years as trustee-chair was nearly perfect, as you demonstrated the perfect blend of, and to quote Fred Logan, noses in, hands out. Very much appreciated by myself, thank you. I'd like to thank you for your service this year. And also to John Stewart. John gave us 11 years of his special brand of leadership. I first met John back in the fall of 1992, or maybe it was the spring of 1993, but I was always impressed with his keen insights and common sense approach to leadership. He was also just one great guy. It's been a sincere, it's been a sincere honor, John, to work with you here at the college, and on behalf of the college, thank you for all that you've done. So, in the end, it was a very good year here at Johnson County Community College. We'd like to thank our trustees for their leadership. I'd like to thank the members of cabinet for their guidance, specifically Dr. Corb, Dr. Larson, Mr. Anderson, all the members of cabinet. Terry Schlisch for doing such an incredible job of keeping this running, bringing this all together. And lastly, every member of our faculty and staff who worked so hard during the course of the year to make this such a great place to come and be inspired to learn. Thank you very much. As I, as I talked about noses in and hands out, Dr. Cook has put his hands in to wrap things up. Yes, one last point I didn't, didn't mention is that one of our students, Matt Phillips, won the National Chef Competition, and this is held in Las Vegas, June 12 through 14, and now he's going to go to Budapest, Hungary, where chefs from 20 to 24 different countries will compete. So, this is representative of some of the great accomplishments of our student.
I believe that's the first student from Johnson County Community College that's represented the United States in international competition by himself or herself. Thank you, Dr. Sobchak, appreciate that. Any old business?
Well, I, I think this might be appropriate time to, if there's a press release on it, but Dr. Cook has also done something else since our last meeting, which was to be elevated to a position on the National Board of the American Association of Community College Trustees, and that should be recognized because that puts Johnson County out in a national stage, and we're very glad that Dr. Cook has agreed to volunteer and to spend as much time as he will be spending on that. So, worthy recognition, and thank you for doing it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We, we did announce last month that I was going to run in October, and what happened? The person whose position that I'm running for in October resigned from his college, and if you're not a trustee of your local college, you cannot be on the National Board, and so they called to see if I would serve as an interim until October. I will still be running in October for the three-year position, but I'm filling out a term from now until October, which gives me the opportunity to attend their summer board retreat in July, so it gives me kind of a step up. Nothing guaranteed for the election, but I look forward to the experience, and thank you for sharing that. Any new business? Hearing none, we have reports from our board, liaisons, faculty association. Mr. Polcik, not to be confused with Mr. Pulcik, I was caught that, and coming from northern Minnesota, we would pronounce that Polcik in northern Minnesota, so.
Thank you. I want to apologize upfront that this report may be very, very short, and I apologize because I know that you're used to long reports. I want to thank Jerry Cook for his service to the college and to the faculty, and, and I would also like to especially thank John Stewart for his commencement's address. I did stow up and watch and sat in the back, and I appreciate, I think you did a fine job, and I repeat what Joe says, and that I think you've done a fine job, and you've been a friend of the college, and I consider you a friend of myself. Other than that, I just wanted to let you know that, got a personal matter, I just came back from getting involved in AP reading for statistics, I was there for seven days. They, they do these readings in three, four cities, Cincinnati, Louisville, Salt Lake City, and Kansas City, and mine was in Kansas City, Missouri, so I had a long way to travel. And we had over a million questions that 830 of my closest statistical friends helped grade, at an average of about 1,500 questions each in seven days, sitting and reading the open-ended questions, some of the marvelous things that we see out there, and I, it's a great, a great service that I can do for the community, the country, and, and I appreciate the college for letting me do that, and representing us in that area. Other than that, the school year's come to the end. Dr. Sobchak did a very good job of highlighting it. I do want to say that my summer is in no particular order, it's just going like this. I graded the statistics exams, as I mentioned. I'm teaching introductory algebra and statistics this summer, as well as being the president of the faculty association. And I meet once a month with some of my dearest friends, the board of trustees and administrators, and I also go bike riding with my daughter. With that, I'd like to close, and thank you very much. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Any questions, I should say?
Yeah, any questions or comments of Mr. Polcik?
Thank you, we look forward to your leadership, and I'm, I'm glad you had a great experience at the training session. Thank you.
Johnson County Research Triangle, trustee Musil.
There's been no meeting since our last board meeting. The monthly sales tax revenues continue to come in slightly ahead of last year. Nothing dramatic, but certainly no downturn, which is good.
Thank you. KACCt, we did meet last week, as I indicated, at Barton County Community College in Great Bend. We, we had a very good session on Friday. We had about 19 new trustees of the 19 community colleges, including our own trustee-elect Nancy Ingram. We spent the morning on an orientation with our executive director. I had the opportunity to make a presentation on helping the president be successful, and we'll talk more about that a little bit later. We then had a session in the afternoon for a couple of hours with our presidents about meeting the challenge and being a part of the solution as we move forward into next year with the community college movement. Then we had a presentation by Myrna Perkins on new federal financial aid procedures and policies, concluding that night with a reception in the Gus Schaefer Gallery. And for those of you that are art fans of particular bronze sculpture, watercolor, and print, Gus Schaefer was born outside of Hoysington. That's not going to go away, that little inside story, I, between Nancy and Joe and I. Hoysington is about nine miles north of Great Bend or so, and is, is a community that has a lot of art history, and I tried to find time we could go up there and at least go to B&amp;B Metal Works, we're two brothers that have a fabulous business making metal art. But Gus Schaefer was born outside of Hoysington by Great Bend in 1907 and became one of Kansas' great sculptures, and the college has a gallery of, of his work, and it's pretty fascinating. We had a wonderful time learning about his, his work and the, and the gallery there on campus. Saturday morning, we had our business meeting, we elected new officers. I am the outgoing chair there as well, and Michelle Hamm of Pratt County Community College will be the new chair. Michael Johnson is the vice president from Hutchinson Community College, I guess, and Don Ash will be the secretary from Kansas City, Kansas Community College. Both Don and Mike have served as chairmans of the board in the past and are coming back for, for another term. Treasurer continues to be David Marshall of Hutchinson Community College. Actually, Michael is from Barton County Community College. And Ron Schwartz from Garden City has had some health issues, was scheduled to be chairman of the board, but he has, has indicated that his health would not allow him to continue, but we did make him an emeritus officer where he can attend our phone calls because we, we highly value his, his input. Then we ended with a joint meeting with the presidents Saturday morning. Ed Berger, who is the past president of, of Hutchinson Community College?
Yes.
Is now with the Cosmosphere, and he gave a report on how the Cosmosphere can work with community colleges in science and math, and very interesting as to what's going on with the Cosmosphere. Trustee- Trustee-Elect Ingram, would you like to make a comment or two about your experience? You had a chance to meet a number of new trustees, and Nancy was actively engaged from the day we walked into the door, so I really appreciate her involvement.
Well, thank you. I won't take much time, but I think the couple of things, as I was thinking after we just visited, that really struck me. Number one was, every time I was left alone, someone came up to me and reminded me of how wonderful this community college was. In addition to that, they always spoke very, very highly of Dr. Cook and Dr. Sobchak, and made me feel most welcome, but certainly as though I was in the room with a lot of great people. So I really appreciated that. We were certainly just constantly listening to updates from the Legislature and very cognizant of what was going on there, and grateful that they ended as well, and appreciate the good work that they have done, at least in protecting us at this point with fewer cuts. But finally, I would just say that what I really learned was that there is so much more that really unites us in Kansas than separates us. And from the smallest school was there to us at Johnson County Community College, they all looked toward us for leadership. But I just really felt very good, very happy to have been there, so I appreciate the opportunity, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate you being there and taking the time to attend, and we look forward to your service on the Board starting next month. One thing I was going to mention later, when I talked about helping your President be successful, is that I think we've done a pretty good job of tying in the President's evaluation with our strategic plan. And we evaluate our President as to what his leadership is into those areas of the strategic plan, and so we don't take all of the work that a lot of faculty and staff put into that strategic plan with our goals and our direction. And so that was something that I think was well-received by the other colleges. They wanted to know a little bit more about that. But anyway, very pleased with how we tie everything together. Next item is the Consent Agenda. It's an item, a time on the agenda where we deal with a lot of routine matters in one kind of big motion. Are there any items that a trustee would like to pull off the Consent Agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will be going into executive session tonight, and before I read the executive session announcement, I just would like to also echo Mr. Pulczek's comments and Dr. Sobchak's comments about Trustee Stewart. I know we had a nice recognition for you in May, but John, your service certainly has been impactful to this college. Your insights as a student and a very successful businessperson and a dedicated trustee has made this college what it is today, and we really appreciate your sincere service, and wish you the very, very best. We know you're not going away because we're going to rely on you. But I would ask any trustees, if they have a comment to make?
I would, we're going to miss you, John. You've been our institutional history. Your financial prowess is unmatched on this Board. You have common sense solutions, you ask the hard questions, and we're not going to let you go completely because we still know where to find you. Thank you for your years of service, over a decade on this Board, to this community.
Anybody else, any other comments? John, any comments you want to make as you?
You know, I just, it's been a fun trip here, 11 years serving on this Board. In fact, Molly Baumgartner, when she moved out of the county, I filled her seat, and so, proud to do that. But this is a wonderful institution. It does change lives, and I've been proud to be associated with it as a student and then as my volunteer capacity and as a trustee. I'll still be actively involved in raising money for scholarship, the Cohen Series. Kristy McWard helps me with that. But this is the finest Board that I've served with, and I know with the addition of Nancy Ingram, we already see her attending every event and getting up to speed, but this is a wonderful Board that's going to go ahead and lead this college on to even greater things. So please, value it, protect it, and make it a very meaningful thing in the community to help continue to change people's lives. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Really appreciate the service. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, in order to protect the privilege and the Board's communications with its attorney on legal matters. The session will last 45 minutes. I'd like to invite Joe Sobchak and Tanya Wilson to join in this executive session. I would entertain a motion.
I'd so move.
Is there a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll begin the executive session at 6:05 in 10 minutes. We have come out of executive session, no action was taken, but I would like to entertain a motion to go back into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, in order to protect the privilege and the Board's communication with its attorney on legal matters, and would like to invite Joe Sobchak and Tanya Wilson to attend this session. The session will begin at 6:52 and will not last longer than 15 minutes. I would entertain a motion for such.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We're back from executive session, no action was taken. However, we do have one item of business to take care of, and we've just finished the evaluation of the President, and I would entertain a motion for his ongoing contract.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Board of Trustees approve the college President's employment agreement as presented.
Second. We have a second? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
All right.
John?